Okay. At this time, I will call to order the Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, meeting of the Iowa County Board of Commissioners. This time, I'd ask that if everyone could please bow your head in prayer and seek the protection and provision of our nation, our state, and our county, and our communities.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to welcome everyone who is present and who is watching on our television channel. At this time, I'll ask County Manager Moll if there are any adjustments to the agenda.
No, Sir Chairman Mallory, we do not have any adjustments this evening.
Any Commissioners have an adjustment?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. For the record, I'll mention that Commissioner Marvin Norman is appearing by telephone and pursuant to the rules during a state of emergency by the state. We have no specific presentations of any recognitions or awards this evening, nor do we have any appointments before the Board, and we do not have any public hearings scheduled this evening. So that'll bring up the administrative matters that are appropriate for a consent agenda. We conduct these discussions mostly, they are technical issues related to budget and other policies brought to us from the staff or in response to Commissioners' requests, and we review those in detail at our five o'clock meeting. It is likewise open to the public in this very room, so at five o'clock, if you want to hear the details on these items, I would encourage you to be here. So I'll turn it over to County Manager Moll to tee all of these up for us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number 16 to use federal equity sharing funds and commissary funds to purchase various items. It was $21,000 of equity sharing funds for flares, $20,000 to upgrade Project Lifesaver Program, and then $15,000 of commissary funds for mobile classroom supplies, et cetera. There's a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number 17 and to accept the 2021 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, or the JAG grant, and this is in the amount of $15,261 for a deployable camera system. There was a request from Troutman Fire Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 14 to withdraw the remaining monies in the amount of $295,775 from the BNF Fire District Fund Balance to pay for renovations at Station 3, pay off remaining portion of a new tanker, and to add full-time staffing at Station 3. There was a request from Cool Springs Volunteer Fire Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 15 to allocate $15,956.25 as received from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for paving of the apron in front of the fire station. Those funds actually came to the county from DOT, and we're in turn giving those funds to Cool Springs Fire Department. Request from the Library for approval of Budget Amendment Number 18 to participate in a digital literacy initiative with the State Library of North Carolina, and that is in the amount of $52,000. A request from Tax Administration for approval of a resolution permitting electronic listings of business personal property. This is just another service to provide to the taxpayer, to be able to list those electronically. And the request has really come from a lot of the CPAs and accountants that do a lot of these listings on behalf of businesses. A request from Tax Administration for approval of September 2021 refunds and releases. A request from the Finance Department for approval of a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed 35 million general obligation school bonds, Series 2021. This is actually part of the 2020 voter-approved bonds, the capacity bonds, for the three facilities, the new high school for Iredell State School, the new middle school for Mooresville Graded, and then the law enforcement training facility for Mitchell Community College. Mooresville Graded is ready to move forward with their project, they have bids in hand, so we're moving forward with their part of the project. Once Iredell State's one, Mooresville Graded has theirs ready, we'll come back and do the same thing for those two entities. But again, this is from the 2020 voter-approved bonds. Request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 11 to appropriate funds for repayments of Juvenile Crime Prevention Council funding back to the state in the amount of $47,299. A request from Administration for approval of an amendment to the ARPA Special Revenue Fund Grant Ordinance and approval of the premium pay policy. A request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the 2020 meeting calendar with one revision to move the December workshop from December the 2nd to December the 9th. And then finally, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the minutes from the meeting on October 5th, 2021.
Is there any further discussion on these consent items? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, make that motion to approve your consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. There's about a seven-second delay between when Commissioner Norman hears what we do and when his response is audible, so that's why we sort of hang fire for a little bit. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Item nine, there are no announcement of any vacancies occurring on any boards or commissions. Item 10, we do have two appointments to two separate boards. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Lisa Famillo and Harrison Jenkins.
And this is Lisa to the Child Futility Prevention Team, and Harrison Jenkins to the Farmland Preservation Advisory Board. Correct? Okay, all in favor, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Did I miss Marvin's response?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the Commissioners? Having none, we move on to the public comment period. We have this every second meeting of the month. People are invited to attend and to sign up. I have three folks that have signed up. You have three minutes to share your thoughts on any subject that you desire to communicate on. We do need to keep it within three minutes. If you start me, see me start to wave the gavel, you know you're getting close to the three minutes. There's a three-minute time clock over here in front of County Manager Moll. There's also a clock in front of me. I try not to cut people off in mid-breath, but if you can wind up just as quickly as you can with your thought, then we can keep it within the requisite time. When I call your name, if you would please come up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and then share with us what your thoughts are. First up, let me go ahead and open the public comment period, is Paula Mimna. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Hello, County Commissioners. My name is Paula Mimna. I live at 260 Rivercliff Drive in Stony Point. I was a teacher in Montgomery County Public Schools in Maryland for over 20 years. I don't have any children in Iredell County schools, but I have great concern for their welfare. We must all put on the full armor of God, Ephesians 6:10-18, and fight to protect the rights of our children. I understand that you all have the purse strings, that you control the money that goes to the schools. We believe that our rights do not come from government, they come from God. Each governor is a servant of the people in the state. We are not the servants, we are in charge of the governance. We must allow no further abuse of any child in Iredell County schools, either by masking, social distancing, isolation, or vaccination. This is against the Fourth Amendment to the Constitution, the right of the people to be secure in their persons. Now, the CDC is planning to vaccinate young children with a substance that does not fill the description of a vaccine. It does not prevent the transmission of COVID, and it does not stop those who've been vaccinated from contracting the illness. Dr. Vanessa Gilman, Senior Director of Worldwide Research, a company in Washington, D.C., has instructed Pfizer employees to hide the fact that fetal cell lines are used in the production of this shot. The AstraZeneca shot uses fetal cell lines, it's C-H-A-D-O-X-1-S, and MRC-5 derived from using lung tissue from a 14-week-old aborted male fetus. The MHRA, that's a reference to AstraZeneca, seeks an artificial intelligence software tool to process the expected high volume of COVID-19 vaccine adverse drug reactions, otherwise known as ADRs, and they want to ensure that no details from the ADR's reaction text are missed. They know how dangerous these shots are. The shots are absolutely not vaccines. They should not be used on any humans, let alone young children. As many as 54% of vaccinated children now have unexpected chronic and serious conditions or side effects. The CDC, which mandates the vaccines, receives money from the manufacturers of these death, whatever you call these substances. Thomas Renz, a lawyer for America's Frontline Doctors, stated that he is suing the federal government on behalf of 45,000 to 55,000 people who have died within the first three days of receiving a vaccination for the COVID virus. Mr. Renz has access to an insider in the medical field who is a whistleblower. America's Frontline Doctors is suing HHS to immediately stop the emergency use of COVID-19 vaccines due to this breaking news of so many deaths due to the shot that has been labeled a vaccine. Is it already three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just say one more thing real quick?
Very.
Okay, I understand that number eight on your agenda was a $35 million school bond. I am requesting that you wait to put that on the ballot until the school board will listen and follow the parents' wishes. The parents' wishes are that they should be the ones to decide whether or not the children are masked, and certainly whether or not the children are vaccinated. So that's my request to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mimna. Let me just clarify that the bond is for the City of Mooresville Graded School District, the Mooresville Graded School District, to build their middle school, and it's already been before the vote of the people. So this is a process of simply following through with our responsibility to market the bond so that they can get the funds to begin building. Just, it's not Iredell State School Schools, it's the Mooresville Graded School District.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Christina Lenderman. Okay, does Christina Lenderman want to say anything? Guess not. Lisa Moser.
Two things, very quickly, I'll try and be as brief as possible. Initially, I just wanted to bring your attention to some of the inconsistency in the library hours of operation. They have been a little bit different occasionally due to COVID. This time of the year, some of our high school students are very busy with projects and midterms and that kind of academic requirements. And when you think about operation hours, you know, the typical public library is opening up at nine or 10 o'clock in the morning, and then the average library is closing down five, sometimes as early as five. Six o'clock is more typical. And some of our students are part-time workers and would prefer that we had, you know, some later reasonable hours, of course. On a second note, I would like to follow up and just say how much our teachers do appreciate policy that is protective of the teachers. I'm not saying that parents' wishes should not be taken in consideration, but when we have data that's telling us and guiding us in the direction that we should go, I'm hoping that all of us will adhere to that. The pedagogy profession, I too am a former teacher, 17 years as a classroom teacher. It was not my first profession, but it was certainly a very well-rewarding profession. I noted my last visit here with you that I do run a warm line for teachers, and what I hear, of course, is confidential, but just in generally saying that the pedagogy profession, the teaching profession, is really in a critical state here. They are tired of the back-and-forth pool with policy. Subs are not available, there's no extra compensation for covering a class during what is supposed to be your planning period. And lastly, I just believe that if parents are feeling so strongly that they know everything that there is to know about pedagogy and don't need a degree in classroom instruction, then they should stay home and do some homeschooling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. That exhausts the number of folks that have signed up. I would inquire if there's anyone here that would like to be heard that didn't sign up. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda is item 11, excuse me, item 13, which is new business. Does anyone have any new business? None. County Managers Report is item 14.
Just a very brief report to let everyone know that we will not have a meeting the first Tuesday in November. We will only have one meeting for the month of November, that will be November the 16th.
Thank you, Ms. Moll. Okay, we had a closed session pursuant to economic development items related to North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11, subsection A4, and we have a couple of motions. First is to call for a public hearing.
Yes, I'd like to make that motion to call for a public hearing on November the 16th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $324,071 over a five-year period for Project LF based on a $17.2 million investment in Iredell County.
Motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I think he said.
Yes, I did.
He already did.
Okay, all opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Motion is approved, and the public hearing is set for November the 16th at the seven o'clock hour. Next, we have an amendment concerning Project Maddie.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the call for public hearing for Project Maddie from October 19th to November 16th, 2021.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Just for the record, Commissioner Norman voted aye, so motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt, first out of the gate. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We're adjourned.